A lot of people from within the Winters community came together for a two-day workshop. And out of that workshop came just many projects that really solidified the idea of an overall spending plan for the city and actual goals and things that we wanted to meet. Many of the priorities that came out of that were the downtown renovations. We ultimately did three phases of those, including the heart bridge project, water and sewer projects. Later that year, we went through, as part of the workshop process, we actually prioritized and ultimately swiped, we financed about $20 million worth of funds to actually get the water and sewer projects going. The idea of extending utilities out to I-505, public safety facility, and probably the firmest commitment on working with our state, federal partners on the Good Creek improvements. So a lot came out of that. I'll share with you that it was an absolutely incredible experience when you bring in all the stakeholders and you talk at a much higher level than people. Oftentimes, people are just talking about specifics. In this case, the idea of talking a little bit broader about things that are important for the community. Because in many ways, that becomes the beginning of which you start going down the road. And probably one of the best examples for that was Good Creek. It wasn't until 2009 that a couple of key processes were initiated by the local Good Creek Boarding Committee. But unquestionably, the commitment to Good Creek came out of that. So what are we talking about? The idea of putting together an overall strategic plan that'll go 15, 20, maybe now to almost 30 years into the future. What we're suggesting is the idea that we would have five topical workshops where we would really press stakeholders from specific areas. Now, realize, all the workshops are open to anybody in the community, and we're going to advertise them like crazy. We want people to come and have that input. But as far as stakeholder groups and people that have interests in things, we're going to tee it up for them. The five areas kind of encompass what we think are some of the five most staple areas of what we do in our business of operating the city. The idea of planning and economic development. By the time that we had that workshop, we would think that the Economic Development Advisory Committee will be bringing their recommendations in. We'll talk about the plan. The idea of we know that there are folks out there that are interested in starting that, but also other processes. The ability for people to voice interests of other types of planning that we might want to do in the city. The idea of community facilities and services. If you go back almost one year, I think it exactly would say Project Plague when I started, but we're coming up on the one-year anniversary. That project showed what this community could give.
Did you have a fire start?
Yeah. Well, so, October 10th, I think. Yeah.
Is the fire starting on the night?
It's Saturday.
Well, if we could single out any project in the past year where you really saw the community stepping up to do something important, it was that. And it also brought the engagement of so many people, especially kind of the younger population of Winters. They're interested in facilities. People are looking at things. The idea of where the city will go as far as recreation. At the next meeting, we're going to have a presentation regarding senior services. The idea of sitting down and talking about what we think are the priorities in facilities and services in that area is important. There's some big items that we need to talk about from an infrastructure standpoint. There are all the things that are critically important that nobody's really interested in. But I can tell you, we're going to talk about a bunch of things that I know the council doesn't. But it is the highest things that they want. We're going to talk about things like Chrome 6 and tertiary treatment. We're going to talk about roads and streets and the various improvements that we need to do, all critically important to our business. The idea of public safety. What is the future of public safety? What are the main issues that we have, things that we want to deal with? And then finally, the last category is the city organization and the structure of the organization for the city. This gets very much into the idea of succession planning that we talked about, some of the short and long-term goals. One of the things that we know is that, from the city organization's standpoint, we benefited immensely as a community in the overall stability that we had in the organization here. A lot of people are very committed to this community, and they, in many cases, dedicated their careers. Nancy Mills is probably one of the hallmark examples of all that. But we do need to talk about the city organization a little bit. We probably won't have a huge act house from the public on that. But I think the ability for the council to, you know, maybe hear a little bit from staff, strategically where we want to go on some things, and to get mine in. Because the city organization ultimately is what's going to drive the overall plan. So five workshops, five nights. Then what we'll do is we'll culminate it in a workshop, probably in January, where we will have a two-day session, which would be on a Friday. And that's where we would invite all those stakeholders back. In each one of the topical meetings, essentially, we're going to ask folks to come up with the priorities in these areas. Community facilities is a good example. What are some of the key things that people think that we need people to do? But from each one of the sessions, they're going to come up with priorities. And it makes the board at the topical meeting, it's on the board. It's not going anywhere. But on the Friday, what I'm thinking is that we're going to bring in some professional facilitators, people who can work with the group. We're going to take everybody up, like I say, to about 25,000 to 50,000 feet for a broader look. We've got all these goals, and having all the various stakeholders, maybe they didn't come to all the meetings, but they're going to see what the key priorities were in each one of the topical areas. And from there, what we will do is we will work together with the council, we'll advise the planning commission, the staff, and everybody just sit and go through. And from that, the Friday, we're going to try and categorize things into three categories, category one, two, and three. That doesn't mean that if you're in category three, that that's a lower priority. What it means is the idea that some things simply take time. Other things need to happen before you can get to various items. And then on the Saturday, we would have, bring the facilitators back in. And then, as the council and the staff and whoever else wants to show up, we'll sit down and try to formulate an action plan. The Friday session will give us a kind of a consensus on many of the key things that we want to start working on. And then Saturday, we'll be kind of gelling it, coming up with a plan, making sure that the council feels comfortable, and that type of thing will kick back straight to the staff. And then we'll be off and running up things. We'll put together an actual strategic plan document that will be very important. I can tell you that from where I sit, as we look at our overall strategic planning for the city, it's going to determine the types of people that we're going to need to hire in the next couple of years. What are those people going to be doing? What are the priorities that we need people working on? The idea that if you have a very strong strategic plan, it gives you direction. And part of that direction is how you go and look at everything from, probably a very good example will be, if councilman Newt stays on Secog, they'll have marching pressures on various things, and things to try and start drawing back from Secog on things. So basically, that, I'm just looking for input from the council on this. As I see it, I think it will be probably one of the more important things that we do over the course of the next couple of years. We'll get as much community and stakeholder input as we can, more collaboratively, to come up with a semblance of prioritization. And then finally, the idea is that we'll start gelling an overall strategic plan that will help us in moving things out into the future. So with that, I'd be happy to take any input, questions?
It all sounds good to me. I just wondered, is this something that we take and then go forward to our general plan? And what this into the general plan, is it just step one? Or is there something that we're looking forward to looking into?
You know what? Yeah. You know, actually, it would be. You know, in so many ways, having a strategic plan is, you know, everything's a part of a process. But what this process is, is the ability to get some stakeholder input to say, this is what we want to do. This is where we want to go. The general plan's a really important plan document, no doubt about it. But within the scope of what the city is today and where it's going in the future, the idea of strategic planning is probably as important, if not more important, because it gives you, it sets you off on a course. And if we get to a point where we're updating the general plan, we already have a ton of input and information that goes into it.
I'm all for it. I was just thinking that after we've come to January and had our meetings, maybe we should let the public know that we're going to move forward with this and start working on our general plan. And then by doing that, you know, everybody in town knows that, well, not everybody in town, most of the people that are aware of what's going on in the city business know that we haven't revised our general plan in a long time. It becomes a topic or so. So I think the public should know that we're working on it, and we should schedule a meeting after the February, January, February meetings to let the public know that we are moving That's just input. And other input that I know that Secog is going to want to see in a general plan or in, you know, they would hope to see it in our strategic planning is how we're going to help meet the greenhouse gas issues. And that all has to be working next to where.
So I'm not saying that I just have a question. I know we applied for a grant. We need to get some money to do a reaggression of the general plan.
Yeah.
We need to find out about that.
I'm not sure. For some reason, I thought it was not true that they were going to be doing those kinds of things. I'll find out. About $100,000.
First, I want to say, I think this is really important. I agree with that. It's a great direction for us. It provides direction for the council, direction for the city. It provides collaboration so that our meetings have to focus in direction in each of our meetings. But I also think when you think of the broad umbrella of these points of planning and economic development, the community facilities and services, infrastructure, water, so on and so forth, that the big umbrella over all that is a climate action plan. And the climate action plan would affect any of the directions that we would choose to go. It would have to consider sustainability, groundwater, groundwater management, CO2, reflective heat from roads, natural resources, land use, and transportation. So I think that as we move forward, our climate action plan becomes an even more important document to shape this conversation. I think that this shouldn't shape the climate action plan. It has to go the other way. So if there's some way that we can bring that information in at a, you know, along with these meetings, it would help us to be aligned with what we're going to be asked to do in the long term.
How do you?
It's a heavy lift. I know it's a heavy lift, but it's a heavy lift that I believe needs to be conquered.
Okay. So are you saying that we would work on the climate action plan before we do all this?
I think that we're, I believe that Carol's already taking courses. She's here to...
Yeah. It's online.
There we go. Sorry, Carol, to put you on the spot.
It's an online class, and it's challenging though, that they would spend time to take everything online. I'm really glad I'm going to need some help to learn online to be able to get into the draft, yeah, climate action. I may actually bring it forward to be a document that we can actually, if we have some time and have it by the end.
How could we bring some of the information that you, I mean, that you know about that's part of your, you know, your long history of working with environmental issues to the table while we talk about these kinds of things? Because we might not know how it affects the environment and the climate.
Well, we're going to be having a discussion with the most climate contact meeting about caps and where all the differences are at, and all the new legislation that's coming down the pipe, which is like, we need to add here, or actually, you know, we have, and how we still have local, and public, we need to handle, so hopefully get some background there on more stuff we have to come, so we'll get. There's a civic spark person that's kind of working on resiliency, Kelly Wise, you know, she's available at some level, I'm not sure. And then there's also Dave Sager, who's always been a little...
Well, I have to say that I have no intention of throwing sand in the machine on this, and I think it needs to move forward. And I want it to move forward, but we think we also have to be aware that there are moving policies that we have to embrace. And I think that this will benefit the city. It will benefit council. It will benefit us in the long term, but we have to be mindful that there are also other things that will contribute to the opposition.
Yeah. And I don't know whether that was an answer to the question about whether it had to be done first. I don't see that it has to be done first to climate, but I think it has to be done simultaneously. It would be foolish to make a great strategic plan and then find that we have to make changes and everything because we didn't take into account climate action. So I think we just have to look on some of the things.
I just think, in all the discussions of workshops that we had, that that's something that we keep in mind as we talk about these projects or the things we want to do. That's some of the things we consider as working on.
We have all these committed people. You know, we're all committed to this. We want a plan, but we also are mindful in our different areas like Secog and relief and so forth, lack of that, and transportation and air quality, that we all have these other, you know, these other asks.
I think that would, that would really change the timetable on things. Maybe...
Just make a comment, just on the way that I can view this, with what John's talking about, is I don't want to get the strategic plan concept that John's talking about kind of intertwined with things like the general plan and the climate action plan, which are, those are really kind of plans that are dictated by state law to a large degree, and they're very specific, and there's lots of requirements. And I think what John was talking about is more kind of a plan at kind of the 50,000-foot level that spans not just planning issues, but kind of every, you know, it's like, yes, things like succession planning and public safety and other issues, like kind of everything that the city looks at, so that you can kind of then prioritize and focus your energies and set goals that you can meet in the future. So for example, a goal of the strategic plan would be to implement, you know, a revamping of the general plan, say, within X period of time, or to get a climate action plan adopted in X period of time. And so this would be a process that you would go through to kind of structure and organize your priorities, more so than if you start doing them all at once, and then it gets to be, it kind of defeats the purpose of the strategic planning at the outset, because then you're not, you're not able to utilize that document to implement these goals, things like, like the ones that you're mentioning. Like, these are the types of things that we would go through for this process to get focused going forward. Is that fair to say, John, what you were thinking about?
The climate action plan often is 100,000-foot, you know? Because so many of the things that go into that, we have absolutely no control ahead of that. But you put together the climate action plan, and you try and do things, and realize that, you know, we kind of tick away at various things that we do, whether it's implementing the California building code. Those types of things are how we do that. I don't know if the city of Winters is necessarily going to solve climate change by ourselves, but oftentimes, you know, the things that we would do would fall into a much broader The strategic plan is your ability to do things which are within your control and within your purview, that are within, that the community can do. But it also means putting big items in there. Whether we like it or not, we, you know, climate change or not, we're going to have to figure out a course on what we're going to do regarding our wastewater treatment facility. If we go to tertiary treatment, it will have the biggest change in the history of Winters. It absolutely will. It will be a sea change of trying to figure out how to do, you know, a $20 million facility all at once. But we put those things in, and in so many ways, the strategic plan is the city's ability to live within the things that we do, prioritize what some of the key goals are, and to go for them. And, you know, as I put down public safety, I can, you know, the only thing I know that is going to come up is recreation. There's a want for various types of services, but, I mean, if we want to go down with the dealing with the... Maybe I'm putting this wrong. I think...
I don't think any of us are asking for you to bring that up. I think that you all feel, I'm just being for myself, I feel pretty excited about it. I think that then, if we're having the conversations, which is the direction of the city, maybe we just do a better job describing the scope of this, so that we don't make it too broad.
Sure.
Yes.
First of all, I think Ethan's take on this makes the most sense to me. It really does. And I feel that developing a good strategic plan is something we have done for over a decade, and, you know, we had good fruits to our labor from the last one we did. I think this is key to moving forward with the general plan update, because it gives us a lot of guidance and direction as to what we want to do and want to see happen with updating our general plan, cleaning up some zoning, and doing those things that we want to do. I think this, to me, this is a key starting point for all that. But I totally agree with Ethan that we need to keep these three topics as separate issues. The climate action stuff, like John said, 99.9% of that, we don't have a damn thing to do with. We don't have anything to do with. It's dictated by the state and federal government, you know? So we just implement it. You know, we just do our part to abide by it. So, you know, we're just, we're just adopted. They tell us we got to adopt, basically. But I think this is real important, that we do these things, and there's a lot of importance to several of these. The city organization and the succession planning, we've got several people that are going to retire, and we need to have a plan, what we're going to do to replace them. You know, the infrastructure stuff John was talking about, the community, the facilities and stuff, planning and economic development. I just want to make sure we don't do that planning and economic development meeting until we get done with the EDAC, because I think that one comes after that, so we can have those recommendations for that one. So I don't think this was intended as an order, this list, but, you know, but I totally agree, we need to keep the three separate, and this is key to the general plan, for sure.
I'm going to say, you know, I agree with, I agree with you completely. And I thank Ethan for his explanation, which was very good. And John, I wasn't in any way trying to shoot down your plan.
No, we're not.
I think it's very important. I'm all in favor of it. I mentioned going on to the general plan afterward, because I think we should do that. But I'm not saying that we should do the general plan first or anything like that. I think that we should keep in mind what we're doing in front of, as you say, 50,000-foot level. Make sure that we're not making something so narrow that we can't do it, have to redo everything in the general plan or in, it was the greenhouse gas and all that. I just want everything to be looked at from the 50,000-foot level. And, go ahead. I mean, when you say you might want to bring it back, I don't see that we need to bring it back, I think, but should just go forward with it.
We have a draft climate action plan, and I'm sorry, I know, I just have enough time to go through it. You know what it is? It's about 150-item checklist of everything you could ever do. And I just kind of look at it, and there's no way that we could ever implement the draft. that we could ever implement the draft that we have. It is, you know, it, it, it was put together in part by students and then by an intern and, and we had a little bit of professional help, but it is the laundry list of, of everything you could ever do. And, and I, I, I think when I went through it, I think there are 150 items in, in there to do, of which none of them are easy. It's like, well, you know, implement this program or implement that. I, I don't, there's, it, it's almost impossible. We, we would have to hire an entire group of people to be doing that. So in so many ways, we've kind of, kind of boiled it down a little bit into things that quite frankly also mirror our city's general plan. You know, I, I, I tried to put together an example and, and much of what's behind us is pretty recent. As far as the various things, we've got our circulation element, lighting, natural plants and everything, they're all pretty fresh. But in some ways, you try and correlate some of the existing programs and things that you do with climate action so there's commonality instead of just creating a whole new deal. But, yeah, I mean, that's right. I, I was just kind of thinking, okay, maybe I need to re-priorize what I'm working on and, and the focus on, on climate. If, if that was going to kind of be the lunchtime. But it's, it's on several in March 2019.
Yeah. Yeah. I will take this one seriously. I don't see a big rush of coming in early January, but we're using time to create trips and lots of people. I just don't see it. You're talking about category three, that's a good one. I just think that's two words. Opposed to, it's two words.
We, we chatted a little bit about this at the economic committee and universally nobody liked the first week in January. So I'll tell you, we're kicking it that way off. One of the, kind of the last volley from this is that I, I'll bring back the calendar to try and give everybody a little bit of the work to be doing. But you're not the only one who didn't think that the first week in January wasn't such a hot idea.
Did I have one? I.
So, yeah, I also, I agree, this is a very important, critical thing that we need to look at. There's a, it's, you know, it's been more than 10 years since it's been done. We have to look at the big picture, look hard around. I mean, we have to consider, we look at that map behind you there, all that area that's slated for development at some point. Be nice to have a list. Here's things that we'd like to have in mind, just like when someone's other development came in and told them, we need a new public safety facility, we need to go swimming pool, we have this list of things. How can we work when that developer comes in? These are things that winters wants. How can, you know, how can you help us get some of these things done? We have some of that, that lets prioritize, not just things like that. A list of things that'd be nice to have, just some of the services and facilities, but the infrastructure stuff too, I think is very important. Getting the, the, you know, when we put that infrastructure, the water and sewers, stuff out towards the freeway, that was key to bringing in that element that's out there. We need to work on more things like that. What we can do, which is what we talked about in the economic development committee, using this area along the river, north of light industrial area, what you're doing to get that developed more, so. There's a lot of good things in here, which I think are things that we need to start talking about. And I agree with Carol, but I don't want to rush it too much. You know, let's, let's do it, do it right. But, yeah, let's definitely move forward. I don't think we should let the, the climate action plan, you know, even the general plan part of it, be driving behind this. I think this is, is really, it's a different process than Ethan explained earlier.
I do think we have to be mindful of the direction of sustainability in our planning. But I would like to say that when I was at the last lead general meeting, I was interviewing someone, it was Bob Sandin from West Sacramento, and I asked her, how is it, how do you guys do it, like how do you do your planning? And she explained that they go on a retreat and they have common goals that they reach and then that consensus drives their meetings. And, and I see this as, you know, allowing us to do the same thing with actually more public commitment, more participation and a, and a, and a more collaborative approach. And I think it is the right, I think it's the best direction that we can take with this.
This actually ties in and I'm not, I hope that you understand this, I'm not pushing for anything special, except as far as getting the public involved, I think that if we can have them in the seat at the meeting, that's really good. But if we can't, I would like the city to spend some money on equipment. It could be videotaped, it could be seen, it could be heard during that time or later. And I'd like to know more about the EDAC meetings and it hasn't worked very well with the equipment we have. And so if we could think of that, it doesn't have to be fancy. It could be just a stationary camera and microphone. People speaking could be heard by the people watching.
Yeah, or at least you can go online or something.
Yeah.
But that's what's kind of nice is what's, these days, well, you can just kind of go and find it online and watch it.
So I, I don't think it has to be thousands and thousands of dollars.
Or a little investment in that might bring more interest to the public, maybe.
Do you want to have a motion on this, Carol?
Sure.
Get some consensus.
Is it put on it?
Sounds to me like there's a consensus, but.
Open it up for a motion.
I, I would move that we support the concept of the strategic plan that Phil County has presented tonight.
I was not going to say that.
Do you have a motion or a second? In the discussion room? All favors, yeah?
Aye.
Close, none, passes unanimously. Go forward, let's, let's go on, it's great.
I'll, I'll bring a calendar and let's, let's, let's kind of look out for the, the next meeting. Because I, in some ways, you know, I, I, I can see us kind of rekindling a spark. The, the last process resulted in quite a bit and it really does come down to sustainability. I think the advantage that we have, I've got, I've got groups from two different cities that want to come here and meet with us about, you know, people kind of hold us up within the region as a small city, there's kind of a little bit of success in things. And it's because, you know, things take time. People don't get that. There's, there, there, there are some cities, they just have turnovers, city managers and planning directors and public works directors. You know if it's accomplished, nothing. Because whoever comes in is just trying to figure out everything and by the time that they, they are, you know, they figure out where the restroom is or the resume is already fired up and they're gone. But this has the potential, plus, you know, one of the things that we all have learned, that it only takes time. Some things begat other things. Right now, we've got a lot of people that are, the next meeting, we're going to talk about senior services. And I know that we're going to talk about recreation services at some point, all super important. But you need money for that. You know, we talked about that we want to do something on, on the general plan. Yep, I think, you know, $100,000 will help us kind of do a refresh of what we have, make it all current, make it kosher. But, you know, a full-blown general plan process, you know, most cities, they started about a billion dollars in Dixon and started, we don't have that currently, we don't need, yeah. And, and you're right, we, we, but as we go, the idea that we can identify things, I think it'll be wildly exciting because we, I pointed to Project Playground. We need to get those people that were involved with that, not only on the committee, but just the people that went out there and rowder and boards, you know, those same people, get them out and come and talk about it. Their future, their children, their businesses. You know, the number one thing on, on our climate action plan, the biggest black eye that we have is really simple. Everybody works out of town. It's all about vehicle miles traveled, the end to. That's, that's 90% of it for us. Winters is putting a scar over the North Pole because nobody works here. That's the problem. And then something to transcend, that's why, you know, people think, well, how do you save the environment? Well, you create a bunch of challenges here in town, that's how you play. And I, I'll, I'll, I'll bring back the calendar the next week.
Thank you, thanks for bringing that forward. Um, next up, we have the city manager.
Uh, two things. Tomorrow, 3:30, we will be having a workshop for contractors and anybody who's thinking about doing some building. We're going to be, uh, building divisions are going to be doing a workshop on our one-day permitting system. Any contractors that show up, they're going to get a coupon, 25 bucks off their next permit for showing up. And I think they're going to get that, we aren't ordering tacos, we're having tacos, but no carnitas tacos.
No carnitas tacos. We hear they wouldn't be as good as Saturdays.
And we will have, we'll have rice and beans, tortillas and salsa. Go ahead. A little bit, but anybody from the public, but we go live with our one, our one-day permitting on Tuesday the 9th. So we, from tonight, everything's going to get going. You mentioned Porch Fest. Steph, we, we plan to get together with the organizers of Porch Fest. I think one of the most effective things that we've done, the tractor parade, is we get together right after. And we, we do, we do all the planning for next year right after the one. No, undoubtedly, Porch Fest was very successful. And it was the perfect first year for them because very well done, it was great. Were there things that could have been improved? Absolutely. And I think they're dialed in and you know, the idea that we do a good deep breath for the most part will come up with the plan. It'll make their job easier and moving things forward and it'll make them even more successful then, I think. Without question, it, it, next year will be significantly larger than, than this year, so.
Thank you. I was encouraging the city and North Health Care out there, we endured.
It was a, you know, this week is, well, starting last Friday, Winter's Health Care came in and pulled the permits. Kudos to Jean and Christine for turning these things around. We've got permits that are being issued out in Heartland and probably with the Stones Road soon.
By the 8th for, it's what they're telling me, by the 8th, they're going to do it.
So we've got that going, but it's exciting. I would imagine that by the first of the year, everything should be in on Blue Mountain Terrace. And they will get their, get their show on the road. There'll be a lot of construction activity going on. It's, uh.
Thank you. And that should be good for planning. Anything else on the agenda? So we will hear the meeting at 7:26.
Guys, I was convinced it'd be okay. I've been huge on the pace, man. Just say it's very winning that the last three blocks.
Couple weeks.
Last couple months, I've been huge on pace. So, Doc, are, are you sitting back there watching the, the meeting that's like, come up the creek?
Yeah.
And supposedly, I, I'm saying, but I've been up the tower a couple.
I need to check the score right now.
One of the things that they, yeah.
Yeah.
They've got that, and then they've got a chain that you walk down. For little kids, it's maybe if I want to go up, I, I try to go up before the kids get there because number one, I don't want to do that in front of parents, and two, I don't think the parents really.